Okay, okay, okay. Getting ready, getting ready. Welcome to warm up. Oh no, I closed all my tabs. It's harder to like share with friends.
I am leaving the camera off.
Okay. Yeah, as usual, we're like super just finished dinner, so. Just sharing, just sharing. Okay, Dre. Uh, we're just warming up. So you're okay? Just on time?
Thanks for the like, Drew, although I don't think he stayed.
I'm sure he just liked it. You can like it without like even going in, so it's still a standard Facebook post?
Hey David!
We think we have a good handle on guesting. I don't know if it works on phones. We'll have to test on phones, cause I'm sure by default, a lot of people will want to use your phone. So we could try at the end of the episode, like send an invite link and then we see. So it's a board game, Dave. We're gonna talk about Village. I keep saying The Village, but there is actually No The in the title. That's a movie.
It's an M. Night thing.
Yellow is the safe color.
Oh my god, kabaddiya to start that again.
Ladies and gentlemen, so we're ready to like, so we're, we're gonna try a guest episode this week. We're going to interview Turing on Thursday, cause Thursday is Thursday. Um, yeah, so I should like do invites for questions for Turing. But don't ask the basic stuff, because like, if you're just gonna ask like how she got into drag, then you should watch her video, ten things you should know about me on her YouTube channel. So, it's quite exciting. Uh, apparently, the invite function doesn't even need the person to have the Restream, uh, Restream account. So, it's a browser-friendly invite, so that's kinda exciting. Side story is that we finally cleaned the aircon filter over the weekend. After months of not having done so.
And now it's super cold.
Now it's super cold. It's not even on high cool. I think I'm gonna lower the thermostat soon, you know?
We've been shortchanging ourselves.
Yes, and we, I can't believe we went through the summer that way. Like, we kinda wasted energy that way. Gotta do proper maintenance on your air conditioning, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, and we use it mainly, cause it's like we're not, it, it balances out that when it's warm in the day and then we don't really go out, and so that we don't add heat stress to our work stress, then we figure the air conditioning is a good enough investment. It's still cheaper than going to the movies and watching plays and things that we would so rather spend money on. Okay, um. What's the stream look like?
Well, it's steady, but it's a Monday, so most likely people are busy. We, I mean, we know there were people who expressed interest in the episode and the fact that they haven't joined the stream yet could mean it's just lots of work, people eating dinner.
Yeah, I should send it to the working group. Plug, plug.
Not generally, we, um, it was nice seeing the response people had to the last episode.
Okay, yeah, let's take a moment. Let's take a moment, we keep taking a moment. No, I, we super appreciate everybody who tuned in yesterday, and I know it was a very different episode, beyond the fact that we were a little hungover, um, but it was really nice and super appreciate that. It was very, it was very chill and I, I feel like, um, actually, I've had a lot of private messages today, so I feel like it resonated with a lot of people. So, and that's great, that's great. That was the, that was the point of last night's episode, which is let's have a moment together. And now we can do guesting, guys. I wanna, I, I super, I super wanna try. If you wanna try like jumping in at the end of this call, let me know.
Um, so Maya has joined us on YouTube.
Yes, so like, but yeah, if anybody wants to like try like joining in, welcome.
Yeah, if anyone's interested in joining in tonight's episode, please comment and we will shoot you.
A Restream invite link.
An invite link, so we can test if it will work out.
Yeah, and then let us know like, um, if you, if you are on, on, uh, on desktop or on a phone.
We, we, we don't promise to have everyone join.
Yeah, I, I have a capacity of only five guests, cause it's a free account. But yeah, we, we're like, we're, we wanna test the feature as much as possible before the interview on Thursday. Cause Thursday, we're interviewing Turing.
It's exciting.
We've been wanting to do this for a while, and then if, if, if this works out well, then we'll try to get the other divas in. We'll try to do, um, there's like a few drag topics in the question queue that we've been wanting to do with guests. So like stuff like local drag perspective and things, um, yeah. Is there a premium? Yes, Restream has a premium thing. I have not invested in it. It all gives us more tools like, uh, removing that Restream watermark and, um, custom backgrounds and things. So for now, it's just like, uh, we're just working with the basic toolkit, which is fine. The basic toolkit is quite robust, as you can see, um, despite buggy features. Anyway, uh, it's pretty late, it's getting late. We should start, we should start. Are you ready? Because I'm not, I didn't load the script. Joke, joke, joke. One moment. And there is the distinct realization that my side of the table is much colder than it used to be, cause the air conditioning is right there pointing at me. Oh my god, we have released the crack. Okay.
This is Toby.
And this is, I didn't do the title. This is Rocky.
And if it's your first time here, do the, put the title, Welcome to Budweiser Pride, our little space on the internet where we talk about anything we want.
Yeah, this is completely unscripted and not entirely accurate, but to be honest, generally, we talk about everything and anything, random live.
If it's not your first time here, thank you so much for joining us again. We will be spending another thirty plus, plus minutes talking about um, a, a topic that we've decided to focus on, and this, this episode's topic is a board game, since Monday seems to be our board game.
We've been trying to do board games on Mondays, just kinda set up a pattern, so.
And the board game we're talking about is.
Village, No The.
Village.
Created by Inka and Marcus, uh, brand, okay? So, um, yeah, Village, Village, Village.
So Vi- Village is a strategic medieval farming game, which uses everything from action drafting, contract, set collection, worker placement, using different types of workers and, um, depending on the expansions you add, um.
Boats, beer, bars.
And, and even customers.
Yes.
But most interestingly, the, the, the key thing that makes this gay game stand out so much is the fact that
People die.
It deals with the passage of time and the, the importance of death.
Strategic death. I will just shout things. No, um, uh, and how did we discover Village? How did we discover? Was it the shut up and sit down episode? No, it's someone else introduced us to Village, right? You, you found it. You researched it, yeah.
Yeah, I, I first read about The Village, um, when someone was, well, reviewing games, they found Quirky and they cited this as quirky because there is a, um, a book at the back, and the, and the, and the board has a book section, or it's like, the records of the village. And basically, by having people in the book, you have people who did notable deeds, and thus they're worth points at the end of the game.
Notable, cause they were first.
But what makes, but the way the game approaches it is that you basically have, um, a clock that moves as you take your actions, and whenever that clock crosses the bridge, someone has to die.
And it must be someone from the oldest generation of people that you have, and through the game, you will have up to four generations, right? Up to four generations of people. So naturally, all the ones die first, then the twos, then the threes. Death, people, death.
So The Village has an awesome board. It's, it's a large, functional, and yet.
Not everyone agrees the board is awesome.
Visual board.
Apparently.
It's awesome because of the way it works with the.
Expansion. And the, the board was designed with, with expansions in mind.
The art itself is acceptable to some levels, possibly even questionable in nature, only because I kinda wanted, wanted things to be clearer. The iconography is not the most intuitive. Um, so for those who are looking at the board right now, um, you are probably spotting that there are colored sections, um, but that's, yeah, it's not that clear, but here, so for example, there's that green section there, that purple section there, and those could have been better presented areas on the board. Yeah, but the board is basically filled with your score trap and the, around, you have the different spots where cubes are placed, which then trigger the actions you do, and then you have the different locations that have, um, the action spaces. You have the book where we track the people who died. Notice that there's just a sad number that states whether or not a space is available on.
Three or four player games, and then it's color-coded based on their occupation. So it's not just people who died, but it's people who died on the job.
On a specific job.
And so you want to slot them in the right death spot. And if, uh, there are no more available spot, they just go to the unmarked graves, because what happens?
The game comes with a sticker sheet, because the stickers are needed in order for you to differentiate the different, well, I don't think they're called niebles, officially, they are.
I don't know, just people, workers, citizens, the soon to be dead.
And you'll notice each of them have numbers, which is the sticker sheet, and the numbers denote what generation they are. As you go through the game, you have the possibility of getting more people, which mean higher numbers, but as time passes, the ones with the lower numbers have to die. And sometimes you will choose to have them die to free up a space you need open, or sometimes you'll have them die because that's the spot in the book that others have not claimed. So it's an interesting system. Players have their own player boards, which as mentioned earlier.
The little clock mechanism.
So yeah, again, the art could have been better. I mean, functionally, it's there, you can see how person equals this and that, but it could have been better. Um, you have the small cardboard tiles for the different things you can build. You have lots of cubes, which um, not the best color choice in my opinion.
Bright, happy colors, not to talk about death.
I mean, why, why would anyone choose brown, orange, pink, green? Neon green.
Yeah, and then like the, and the orange is not that far away from the brown, so it, it, there are, um, like, I feel like there are, uh, colorblindness issues from a differentiation perspective.
But the game comes with bags, and the bags are used to mix up your cubes as well as to serve as the church, which seems to be a subliminal message.
The church is the black bag with black monks. Ton, 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 game reference. Um, but yeah, so the, I think the first thing we need to, oh, book part, uh, box part, okay. One of the things to, to point out is that it's strange that, um, for the most part, I guess you could say yes, that The Village, or Village, sorry, there's no the, has worker placement mechanics, but not worker placement as we are familiar.
Because you don't actually place any workers anywhere. What you instead have is that the colored spaces on the board are, uh, I guess populated with colored cubes. And on your turn, you choose a cube to take, and by taking a cube from a specific spot, you activate the action of that spot.
So it's cube-taking worker? In some spaces, you need to put the worker i- in response to taking the cube, which triggers the action, because you, depending on sending them on a journey, assigning them to learn a trade, these things, sending them to politics, I don't know. Um, uh, it's a, it's a weird mechanic, but ultimately, your actions are determined by the cubes that you take. So, uh, the different slots only have a certain number of cubes available, like the market only ever has one. And then traveling tends to only have like two to three, depending on number of players. Um, and, uh, but those, the different colored cubes are on themselves a resource that are spent in certain action spaces.
Because, uh, certain action spaces allow you to do certain actions without having to place your worker there.
Or without spending time, yes.
So, um, in brief, The Village is quite tactical. It's quite, um, deep for a game that, that you think is really focused on. Hey! Um, Nathan's joined us. Hi Nathan.
He did.
Um, so it, it's quite tactical in the sense that, um, not only are you choosing what actions to take that round, cause you can't really block other players unless it's the last few cubes.
Yes.
But you're also choosing what colors to take in preparation for later turns, because three of the same color of any cube can be spent as an extra action to do any action, even if there is no cubes available in that space. In addition, there will always be black cubes, and these black cubes, whenever
Bestalents!
Force you to move time faster, which means there are times you will willingly choose to take a black cube to sooner have someone die in the game.
Because, okay, and then, and we keep talking about death so much, because it's really a funny thing, that the, the whole, the Book of Records for The Village. Um, because the slots are based on the occupation you have, then it's a race to occupy those slots, because the number of people you have in the book will determine possible points at the end of the game. Naturally, more people in the book, more points. Um, so if you know that there is only one spot for people who are in the church, then you're going to want to make sure you take that slot as soon as, you know, as soon as reasonably possible, but still getting the benefits of having your person in that spot to begin with, because there are certain benefits for being in different spots in the church or in the, whatever, the mayor's house thing, um.
And mind you, you don't get points for each person you have in the Book of Deeds. I'm sorry if you call it Book of Deeds, I don't know if that's really what it's called.
I forgot what it's called, but it's a book, it's the record of the something.
Yeah, the record, I think. But the thing is, the only people who get points are those who get the majority, and those who are in second place. So there's that, um.
Oh, you're thinking about the church specifically or the?
So you have to really plan out how you will make your moves, because sometimes you will have to devote someone in a certain spot for a long period of time.
Think like a farmer in Carcassonne. They just kinda hang there for a while, but then you are the dragon, cause you will kill them.
And you might have to find ways to, to kill off your first generation people and keep that other first generation person long enough to benefit from having him in that spot as long as possible. The church, after all, awards you.
Flash fact is that if the guy, if the Generation One guy is in the church bag and has not been drawn, he does not die.
He somehow becomes immortal. Uh, hi, Makai, and oh my god, kabaddiya. Um, but yeah, so, um, The Village is a very interesting game at its base. And why am I showing this? So this is the travel map where people can travel starting here, spend a journey by spending cubes.
And wagons. And wagons must be built in the frickin' crafts area.
But then you have Village Port, which is one of the expansions.
The second one, actually.
And the expansion adds a port, which you will notice is a map, and the map is not complete, because it is designed to fit in the port. Okay, am I doing this right?
Not quite. Just align it to the corners.
Ah, I can't, it's so hard to do it in reverse. No, to the corner.
The edge of the map. It, it lines, it, it lines up edge to edge more or less. So, but yeah, so as you can see, um, it fully covers, it still continues the score trap, which is cute, but not essential, because you only score at the end of the game, really. Um, but then, and now you have a different thing where there are islands and you travel to, and then you have boats, which have limited storage capacity. It's, it's all these other rules. So, the, it, it was a nice little mechanic, this whole, the Village Port. Um, and adding this whole sea travel aspect.
It adds some within both pieces.
We need to have boats.
It introduces boats for each player, because you have to keep track of what stuff you're shipping with you.
Uh, it must be three item, three different items in the, in the boat, and yes, a person is an item.
And of course, boats don't function without your captains, so you now have to decide the captains you are hiring, as well as, well, um, any.
But those are just bonuses, right? But, I mean, you're not essential to have a captain to travel.
I can remember, I think you're required to have the basic captain, at least.
Ah, yeah, yeah, you just go with the basic, you just don't have special powers, yeah.
So as you can see, by having this expansion, your base game suddenly is modified. And that seems to be a, a joy that they have embraced, even with the next expansion.
Okay, actually, the, the, I think the, the Village Inn came first. The Village Inn, be- like I said, it introduces beer and a bar. Barmaids, bar mitzvahs.
So we have two different pieces. You'll notice a.
It's a modified book, because now there's new slots.
And then there's the tavern. And these, again, are made to fit in.
You have to really open up the board for this one. It doesn't fit there. It repli- it, it sits on the side.
Ah, yeah, okay, okay. So it covers the book, updating it for the new game.
New slots.
And then the tavern.
It's in the other corner. You rea- that's why you really have to open up the board.
And then that's the church.
Yeah, yeah, ah. No, cause it's here.
That's what I'm telling you. It covers the book.
See, it, it, it matches the grass. It covers the book, then the book now goes off screen. Um, the tavern allows you to brew beer, and then beer is, could be spent at the tavern so that you can wine and dine people, because now there's patrons, and then if you fulfill their needs, then you get points, and it's, it's just an extra point stuff, and it's quite cool, quite cool.
The expansion also allows, um, for that extra player.
Ah, yeah, then it becomes a five-player game, which is why there's more slots in the book. So as, so as it goes, I mean, like, it's, it's definitely one of the stranger games, uh, we've played. The strategic challenge is very different.
Okay, I guess so, there's nothing to be said it's.
So The Village with the Village Inn and the Village Port, uh, it's kinda complete. Um, I think you can, you still have a very solid game experience if you just play the base Village game. That in its own is like so rewarding, and it, to some degree, you can try to specialize in a path, like, um, there's the market that only triggers once a round. There's only one action cube there ever. Um, but then like, if you have produced enough stuff, then the market could be valuable to you for earning points. But those things that you produce, maybe there are also things that allow you to harvest more goods, like a plow and cattle, you know, and things, um.
The game nicely has the sense of balance in the sense that someone might focus on travel and visit all these spots, but the amount of resources and time spent that person takes, yeah, to do the travel actions, that's gathering the cubes needed.
Get, was making freaking wagons.
Yeah. Um, sort of balances out with the person who's just building stuff constantly in the crafts area and selling them in the market, because that person, on the other hand, um, has the challenge of only being able to sell from certain specific customers at a time, once, once around. And the, the tricky part of knowing when to pivot and adjust your, your strategy as you play is a large part of the fun.
Like people who go into politics and instead use their political influence to just buy things outright, instead of crafting them themselves. And of course, the real pivot is knowing when you're gonna kill that villager and put him in the book forever, because you want endgame points. Um, because especially like in the church, and like, you want that majority of the people in the church to have the church majority come mass time, but you also need to have someone who is furthest along in the church, and it has several tiers of, I don't know, indulgences paid to be closer to God, um, although it's feeding them until they move forward.
Also known as Toby.
And you know, and as you, uh, as you pray, then do you really want that first generation guy to be the one you move down the track? Or do you wait for a second or third generation person to come out of the bag and be more, a more worthwhile investment? And therefore kill your first gen, put him in the book, lock things in? I, I get very excited about, uh, killing my people and putting them in the book, because I'm always like trying to save the spots, cause I want book majority, um, admittedly, cause there's, there's a fair number of points at, in the book. And then admittedly, from a place that I love travel, uh, it's harder with the, I, I find, find travel a little harder with the port, or at least I'm not used to it yet.
Forces you to think about bringing stuff back or bringing.
Yeah, there's like, there's the whole back and forth thing, and, and even the island combination of cubes is very different. But it's not a bad thing. Uh, oh, bless number of steps, ugh.
Which is because of the captains.
Yeah, 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 that was the, that was the captain involvement. And then, I've never really been good at the market. Toby's good at the market, I find. Toby is able to sell more at the market than I have ever attempted to, um.
But mind you, I don't always win this game. I tend to be the one who loses in this game.
Cause he doesn't kill people soon enough.
Yeah, I don't like killing my people. I, I like watching them grow old and then, ooh.
Yeah, so, um, it's, uh, would, is it important to get all three, you know, all, all three to complete the set? I think so, only because the resulting tableau and how the little extra board pieces fit onto the main board like puzzle pieces is.
This is a joy. It makes setup so fun. It, it makes it interesting as you're saying, oh, you cover them up. Um, so no one has, no one has commented that they're willing to be a sneak-in guest?
Yeah, does anyone wanna help us test the guest feature today? You let us know now and we'll.
We'll shoot you a link, so you can join and share some comments. Um, yeah, I'm quickly checking if there's any other comments. Lots of hellos. Um, Andre shares sad thing to play games when colors are di- difficult to distinguish.
Yes, yes, or, and, and there, there are a lot of games you wander into this problem, or like cube colors are too similar and things like that.
My share is it's tactical, especially in terms of political area.
Yeah, when you're in a, because politics, you can, yeah, politics starts by getting the first player token next round, which is cool, and then, um, uh, but then later on, you're just buying stuff, or you're just buying points, and it just tells you about political will, right? It just, it just does these things. So, um, my gosh.
Uh, so what else? So strategies, um.
Kill them! Okay, uh, it's important to have someone always on your personal board as much as possible, because uh, when you wanna take the harvest action, if you have no one on your board, you cannot harvest. And that's easy to, like, you can run out of people really quickly. You start with four, you start with four, but as soon as you've committed one or two to the church, and then one's learning a trade, and suddenly you're down to one person. So you do have to have that life event at the, you know, the little wedding spot, which is either to have, to create a new person or to family life, or to, no, that's, that's covered now. Or, um, or you retrieve a worker anywhere on the map and bring them home. Um, you could, you could harvest more efficiently with a horse and plow or a, an ox and a plow, but it's hard. I mean, that's production and it's such a pain. And then pay very careful attention to your cube colors. You're either building combinations to pay for goods outright or three-of-a-kind combinations, um, to get things flowing, and don't be afraid of the black cubes.
Yes, don't.
That's always my tip for, for Village. Don't be afraid. Kill them!
There's always the fear from new players that the black cubes are bad in the game. But in truth, they're very tr- they're very tactical, they're very strategic.
Yeah, just because they're called bestalents, it's fine.
It, it is sad that getting a black cube moves time forward and you don't get to keep the cube, so you don't get to use it for later actions. But that person moving is very, very useful if you time it right. Um, don't delay expanding your family. Having that extra person on your player board is always very useful, cause God knows them. God knows the the number of times in the first few times we've played wherein I'll do, oh shit, I don't have a person.
And then no, and no, it's not buying, uh buying, uh having kids and and adding to your family is not adding actions. Because you tend to think workers are actions. No, cubes on the board are actions, but you still need these workers to work to to toil away and die.
Because some some actions cannot be accomplished without the worker going there. Um pay attention to the market's movement because it allows you to get rid of stuff that you might realize you can grab in a turn and not necessarily use, but just, you know, cash it in for points.
Hmm.
Um, the market is surprisingly devious and suddenly pushing you forward with points at the end of the game. Especially since no one really keeps track of the numbers.
Yeah, and 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 as for rulebook, the little point token you get for selling at the market is then kept face down. And nobody can see how many points you earn for that actions.
Um do not hoard your coins. Uh it's easy to think I'll hoard my coins cuz each coin is a point. But the the fact that you could spend the coin to bribe the church in order to make sure one of your people in the black bag comes out as a monk is huge.
Say indulgences, just pay for your indulgences. But yeah, the coins are coins are important in that regard.
And then politics, know when to invest in politics. Whether it's just to grab the first turn token while the ring um or in order to be able to grab certain tools for free. There is a huge advantage in having some guy in the town hall and having that person simply go, oh, okay, this turn, I suddenly have a cow. And it's
It's so useful, man.
Hmm.
Um and then I guess, you know, and then and and the 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 three cubes of one color extra action is important, but it is not like don't invest your entire strategy on it. Yes, it does sort of prolong the turn because you are adding an action that does not exist. Yeah, because you don't consume a cube.
And a round only ends once all the cubes are used up, including all the black cubes.
Yes, so I mean, it's it's powerful, especially if there are certain actions you wanna take. Um especially like maybe you have a crafts person who's about to die, then you might as well spend the three cubes, trigger the action for free and kill him now cuz you want him in the book in the yellow spot. I I I kill my people a lot.
Nathan says let us how to. I'm not sure what that is.
I think he meant, uh no, if you invite him to the stream.
Um, well, I guess we could share the link. Do we do we share it specifically? Do we share it directly?
Specifically because you don't want to like spam everyone with it.
Okay, yeah, let's shoot the link over and then we'll see if you'll be able to join. Um if you can't, it's okay, but it'll be fun if you're able to.
Send you the link on Facebook Messenger.
Uh and I guess the last tip I would add, okay, I lost it. Which is my last tip?
Death! There was, there was a last tip. Ah, what is my last tip?
Retire by the three cube action, uh extra turn.
Oh!
The game instantly ends.
The moment the last cube is taken.
Full.
Ah, yes.
And that is a terribly powerful tactic to mess up your opponents when you realize what they're doing. And you know you can end the game.
And it's it's not just the book because um there is also the unmarked graves that where like if you ran out of yellow spots or green spots when future uh villagers die, it goes to um it goes to the unmarked graves. There are very few unmarked grave spots. So that can fill up very quickly and also act as an endgame trigger.
Hmm. So it's 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 devious cuz I've had sessions and you can guess who triggers the end of the game.
What?
But they'd be sessions wherein
Death!
You know, I'm like, okay, I'll get a cow and then I'm planning to get this cuz later I'll go to the market and then he'll trigger it. And I'm like, I'm stuck with a cow.
Oh, oh.
And a plow, and they're not worth points at all.
And then don't underestimate being devout and pious. Because every round ends with going to mass. And if you have the church majority, you get you you get nominal amount of points. But this adds up, ladies and gentlemen. Cuz it also means that your churchgoers are further up the track. They're worth more points at the end of the game.
Yes.
See, my my also confirms wrong, it triggers endgame. I am the killer of people. The culling of the sheep happens. So yeah, it's super fun. Oh, uh Nathan just says thanks, have to learn the features. No, no, just click it.
Yeah, just click it.
Just try.
Just click it.
Just try.
Allow them to use the camera and then we'll have you on the show real quick. Um but yeah, um.
If not, anyone else wanna try? Wanna try? Mai, you wanna try?
Mai, you have a camera? Come on, we'll drag you in Mai real quick.
Uh then I have to remember to reset the link tomorrow.
So the village is, um, okay, um, is it heavy? I I would say it's a bit heavy.
Yeah, it's definitely mi- minimum, medium, leaning heavy, especially with the expansions.
It's one of those games which will force you to think in a very different way from most board games. In most board games, an action you do, you generally benefit from that action and that's it. Uh the village forces you to think many more steps ahead because the cube you took is important.
Yeah, I feel like I feel like the village is super like you you need minimum, medium to long-term thinking to get through it. Because you're getting cubes in anticipation of things you'll buy. You're crafting items in antec- in anticipation of future actions you're taking, whether harvesting, selling to the market or traveling. You're traveling hoping to trigger combination bonuses that get you more cubes or items, which let you travel more. You know, it's it's, there's a very tight interconnection. There are many paths to victory. Um and you gotta kill your people. So it's a it's a it's a whole tricky balance and um but we super enjoy it. It's definitely crunchier than like Lowlands. Lowlands is bit, is like a super, is a lot easier to learn. Still hard to master, but as terms of like quirky worker placement, um Lowlands is probably easier to learn.
And lastly, there is a board game called My Village, which is by the same designers. But it's supposed to be a um smoother and sleeker version of the similar system. It has many similar aspects, but it also includes dice to some extent. I guess they wanted a game that was less completely strategic and added a bit more randomness and chance. Um so it might be something you might want to check out if you're the type who shies away from total Eurogames and would like something with a bit more chance. Um, my ads, I agree. I like Village because it's different strategically compared to other games. Yes.
Andre says, I have been confirmed to be the fourth horseman of the apocalypse. I am death. I accept this! I will now speak only in all capital letters because I'm a Terry Pratchett fan. Quackers.
Okay, the ducks have agreed.
Yep, so um thanks so much for joining this little video on the village. And then again, reminder to everybody on the stream that we're experimenting with guest features this week. We will have our first guest episode on Thursday.
Our first official guest, but in the episodes before then, we will keep trying to see and test it.
Yeah, we want random guests.
If there's anyone who wants to join in, please stop being afraid. Um but for now, that has been thirty minutes and we had a lot of fun. We hope you will join us again next time.
Yes, uh if you have uh questions or suggestions for future topics, uh for topics for future episodes, then fill out the Google form at Bitki Budweiser Ideas. If you have questions that you want us to ask Taring Quinto, drag queen extraordinaire, lip sync assassin, um uh feel free to let us know as well. Uh we told her not to be pressured to wear drag, so don't expect if she comes in chilled, then that's fine. Cuz we just, cuz Budweiser Pride is still like a relaxing activity forever, okay? Uh you can follow us on Twitter, all Toby No Shade or RG Suniko. You can send your questions there if you want, especially the Taring stuff, that's fine.
You can also check out our blog, that's budweiserpride.com. You'll see all the previous episodes and stuff about us.
Yes, uh feel free to continue the conversation in the comments below. Let us know what you think about death in in the village. And do you like the whole puzzle element of the game? Uh be sure to subscribe for notifications, whether on Facebook or YouTube, so you don't miss our next live stream. Once again, I'm Rocky.
And I'm Toby.
And this is Budweiser Pride.
Thanks for watching.
Thanks for watching. Have a great week.